One, two, bow our heads and let's have a moment of personal reflection and invocation. All right, thank you very much, and we will officially call this meeting to order. And welcome to all of you. Let's hear it, our friend outside. Come on in and join us. We're officially calling the meeting to order, welcome all of you. And again, I'll say, anyone who wants to follow along on the agenda, which would be found on the table in the back of the room, you're welcome to do that. And the third item on our agenda is a pledge allegiance to the flag which is to my right. Let's all stand, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our own nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number four on the agenda, consideration of the agenda. And Mr. Hewitt, I think you had two recommendations you'd like to make.
Yes, sir, if we could realign item 21, the water agreement with Brunswick County, up to item 7A, and then the lead to be taken up at a later date, item 22, the FEMA gated community debris pickup update.
Okay. Any more requests, otherwise I'm looking for a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Motion.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The amended agenda is approved. And we're going to turn our attention to number five, which are the minutes for June 4, June 15, June 28, and June 30. Is there a motion to approve those?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from those four meetings.
Ms. Patton, you want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Patton.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clark. Number six on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. If you'd like to speak, or do we have any names?
No, sir, nobody's signed up.
Okay. All right, no one signed up, nobody's speaking. So we've got a number seven. Mr. Hewitt, you're going to talk about?
Yes, sir.
I looked there, then you were gone. All right, carry on, sir.
Yes, this is a presentation of the certificate of completion for the School of Governments Municipal and County Administrators Course to Kristy Ferguson. I'm pleased to present the certificate. This course of study is a graduate level suite of coursework that's designed for appointed city and county officials whose responsibilities require an understanding of local government beyond the functions of their special departments or their individual areas of concentration. Major subject areas included the local government law, organization and management, finance and budgeting, public employment law, planning and regulation of development, and municipal and county services. In addition to providing in-depth exposure to the legal framework and administrative requirements of North Carolina city and county government, how city and county services are organized in addition to providing the foundation for building a broader network of local government peers. Kristy attended this course over the last 10 months during COVID, I might add, along with a number of city and county managers, department heads, and other city and county officials whose responsibilities require an understanding of functions beyond their individual areas of specialization. We're certainly glad to have Kristy at Holden Beach. Congratulations, ma'am.
Can we get the whole board real quick?
Yeah.
Oh, they were coming, come on, we need everybody. Come on. All right, one, two, three.
Mr. Hewitt, you're still up for 7A, and congratulations, Kristy. We all love you and appreciate you very much.
Yes, thank you, Kristy.
Yes, sir, we're fortunate to have John Nichols from Brunswick County join us to this evening. On, for your consideration, is the water contract, the wholesale water contract with Brunswick County. Holden Beach was actually one of the first local governments in Brunswick County to enter a wholesale agreement 30 some years ago. You know, I actually remember when the water bond passed, so I guess by 117 votes, something like that, you wouldn't believe it to see the county today. That agreement has expired, and we need to re-up our agreement to ensure the continued provision of retail water to the citizenry. Specific questions, John's here to answer anything that you may have. We've actually been working back and forth. I think the first cohort of towns needing to re-up their agreement is us, Oak Island, Southport are the first three whose agreements expired with several others in iterations to follow. But we've been working on this now for about a year, you know, back and forth, and have coordinated with Southport and Oak Island to develop something that is acceptable at a macro level for everyone. And John's been real good to work with. And I believe that this is the template that the county is going to use moving forward as other agreements expire and need to be updated. Of course, they've got some restructuring with other wholesale customers that are added into the mix during that, over the course of the last year. It's complicated things somewhat, but as Mr. Smith said the other day, you know, we don't really have another choice. We don't have, you know, there's not another wholesale provider, and we certainly don't want to get into the water business. I mean, it's barely enough water as it is. So without further ado, the staff is recommending that you consider the agreement favorably and adopt it. Again, subject to your considerations.
Would you like to come share any thoughts or comments with the board, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Holden and members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. The county and Holden Beach has a long history of cooperation, and we look forward to working with you in the future on utility needs. This is obviously a very critical point. We're expanding our Northwest Water Treatment Plant. There is a lot going on in the utility system, a lot of growth in Brunswick County. And so, you know, what we're looking at is trying to ensure that we have the revenue stability and our partners are still partners as we move forward. And so, as Mr. Hewitt mentioned, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to work with Holden Beach on this agreement. It's very important to us. But if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on the agreement or anything else that we're doing in Brunswick County.
Commissioners, have any questions?
Yeah, I, we had a question at a recent public hearing that wasn't related to water, but I thought since you're here, it would be a good chance for you to answer specifically as the county person. We had a question about what was, what were we doing about water quality? Obviously, we buy our water from the county as a wholesale, and I thought it'd be a good opportunity for you to remind everybody what the county is doing to improve water quality, particularly related to the industrial pollutants in the paper.
Right, and that is obviously one of our primary concerns. The, one of our initiatives with our Northwest Water Treatment Plant is to provide advanced treatment through low pressure reverse osmosis. And that will, is really the best, one of the best ways in which to remove a lot of these pollutants. And not just the type of pollutants that we've seen in the media, but a wide array of pollutants. And for those pollutants that they're making now that we don't know when they'll put it in the river. And so, you know, we're working very hard that way to ensure that the treatment process is the best that we can have in Brunswick County to ensure that people want to come here and for our residents that are already here. We also look at other things, how can we protect the watershed? What ways that we can work with DEQ and our partners to ensure that industrial pollutants are not put into the river? As you are probably aware, there is a lawsuit that Brunswick County has with one of the industries, the primary industry responsible for pollution within the river. And we're vigorously pursuing that. And if there are any, if the courts look favorable on that case, then we'll certainly try to utilize those funds to reimburse in some manner for the costs that are associated with that advanced treatment.
And as I recall, that treatment is, that advanced treatment will come on stream sometime in 2022, so it's getting close.
That's correct. The overall project should be complete by the end of 2023. But there are certain phases that we'll hit where we'll have parts of it available. We'll have additional capacity in 2022. And we'll have some additional low pressure reverse osmosis treated water. We won't have the full 36 million gallons per day, but we'll have some online, hopefully enough to meet our typical needs for that plant, which is on average about 13, 15 mg/d. And in the summertime, we peak at about 22, 24 mg/d.
Any more questions, comments, commissioners? If not, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Hewitt, are you looking for action?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve the wholesale water agreement with Brunswick County.
Second.
Discussion? Anyone? Comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous, Madam Clark. Police report, Chief Dixon.
Looks like things are getting back to normal. It's been a while since we stood up here. So the police report this month for June, I'm actually going to do a little backtracking in it. During the last meeting, the board asked me a few questions that I was not able to answer at the time. So I'm going to follow up with some of those and try to get through this and see if we can provide you some better answers. So back from May 1 through June 30, to follow up on some of the questions was about traffic stops. During that timeframe from May 1 to June 30, we issued 77 traffic stops, or conducted 77 traffic stops and issued 41 state citations. Those 41 state citations had 57 total charges on them. We did nine written warnings and 27 verbal warnings. The 57 charges ranged from speeding, unsafe movement, lane control, you know, violations. There was 25 of those. License related was four. Registration insurance related was 12. Marijuana paraphernalia related was 14. One child restraint and one possession of stolen property. We also issued 59 ordinance violation tickets, with all 59 of those being parking related. We made five arrests. Two subjects had active warrants, one DWI, one assault, and one misdemeanor. So that's May through June. Don't think that's crammed into one weekend or anything like that. That's that two-month timeframe to backtrack on some of that. I'm going to dive right into the Fourth of July weekend, since it's already passed. I know this isn't the July report. Over the July 4 weekend, which I'm counting Thursday, the 1st, through July 5th, which was Monday, we conducted 22 traffic stops with 12 state citations written and a total of 18 charges on those 12 citations. One written warning and nine verbal warnings. The 18 charges, again, had speeding, unsafe movement, lane control violations was four. License related was two. Registration insurance related was three. Marijuana paraphernalia was five. Three child restraints and one carrying concealed weapon. We also issued 35 ordinance violation tickets, five of which were fireworks related, 30 parking violations. And I just want to thank the community and everybody talking to the night shift officers. Our fireworks was down tremendously this year. So everybody did a great job. You know, we ran across some here and there, but it has not been like it has in the past. So from the police department, we seriously thank you. Also, over the Fourth of July weekend, we were fortunate enough to work with the Brunswick County Sheriff's Office, North Carolina Marine Patrol, and the North Carolina FTA branch who brought over the Batmobile. Some of you may have seen it across the bridge there. And we set up a campaign for the Operation Firecracker, Booze It and Lose It. North Carolina Marine Patrol and Brunswick County Sheriff's Office worked heavily on the waterway side. Holden Beach, obviously, worked our jurisdiction. The sheriff's office worked that side. And there was a total of 23 charges reported during that. Since there was multiple agencies involved, I can't tell you about all 23 charges. But those were on that one night, and that was Sunday night, I believe, so. Other thing that happened during the Fourth is we did a trial run of closing the bridge, closing the left turn lane off the bridge. We got a lot of positive feedback from that, and it looked really good from what we saw. We took a break from it for a week, and we tried it again this last weekend. And it looks like, from everything we're seeing, that the bottleneck is actually happening at the stoplight. You have three lanes of traffic coming into one stoplight, and then once they get on the causeway, they're able to flow as long as that left turn lane is closed and people are able to turn right. So we're going to spread the word. We want to get the word out there that we intend to close the left turn lane on the bridge every Saturday until at least Labor Day. We'll address it again after that. But we are, that is a plan that we have in place. And I talked to, I just kind of want to throw this out there. I had one homeowner, he called me and thanked me for it. But he gave me his perspective on it, and I just want to put this out there. On Saturday, he got stuck in traffic out here coming in from Stone Chimney Road. He said he was around Tim Stone's house, so I don't have an exact location. I hope most people know where that's at. But from there to the stoplight, it took him 22 minutes to get from Tim Stone, around Tim Stone's house to the stoplight. And it is roughly a mile to there. Took him 22 minutes. Once he got through the stoplight, it took him five minutes to get to the stop sign. And that's roughly a mile, so, I mean, his time was cut in a fifth, you know, there. So, or it took him a fifth of the time. And then once he got onto the island, it took him eight minutes to get to the fish street, which is where he lives. And he said that's about average, you know, the eight-minute travel time. So most of the congestion is before you get to the stoplight. Once you get to it, traffic's actually flowing. It's still bumper to bumper, but it's moving. And then once you get here, you know, it's your normal travel. So that's what I've got for May, June, and July. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them if I can. And if I can't, we'll get back to you with the numbers.
I'd just like to thank you and the mayor and David. I know you were having discussions about changing the traffic pattern before the Fourth. And I think that that was a great decision, and I'm all for doing it the whole season from here on out.
I will say.
I agree.
I didn't want, I wasn't trying to take the glory in it. If there was any kickback, I didn't want to put it back on the mayor and the town manager. But yes, honestly, we did all three work on this together. I could not have done it by myself. So I think that they're supported in being able to do this.
Well, most of us that live here know to turn right and you just pick a street and turn back, it's a whole lot easier to get around.
That's right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Yep, thank you all.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, your whole department.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on number nine. And Ms. Ferguson, if you'll lead us on that, please.
Yes, sir. This is the last part of our funding for our FEMA projects. It has been obligated through FEMA. It's CAT-Z for Iziasis. All the CAT-Zs that come into the town are calculation of the administrative cost for that storm. So you'll see that some are larger than others, and it depends on what the total cost for the storm is. But this makes us whole on all the storms that have hit us to date that we plan to bundle together for our fall project. It will be housed in Fund 70, and the suggested motion is approval of the attached budget amendment.
Is that your request?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the budget amendment, 2118.
Looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor, wait a minute, any discussion, questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimously approved.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we're on number 10, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir, this is one of a couple more end-of-year housekeeping budget amendments for, necessary in order to bring the fiscal 20-year 21 budget for accommodation tax in keeping with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. We had excess collection of approximately 35% above over last year's collections due to the influx of renters associated with the COVID-19 and the reopening of the state. I do want to add that that's probably not exactly correct. I want to put a plug in for the tax collector. I'm sure that she's not responsible for all of these collections, but I know that we get a lot of commentary on, are we obtaining these, the collections that we're supposed to? So Margaret's been real busy this last year on knocking on doors and making sure that those tax collections are correct. So I'm asking for the end-of-year budget adjustment, budget amendment to increase the accommodation tax by $362,648 to reflect the actual collections as of the end of June.
Looking for a motion.
If y'all want a clean audit, you need to approve this one.
Okay. A motion to approve ordinance 2118, amending ordinance 2110, revenues and procreation orders, ordinances for fiscal year 20.
20.
And 2021.
All right, any discussion?
I have a question about the beach vegetation sand fence project increases. We had those budgeted, but I'm assuming that because of the size and scale of what we did out on the beach, what we had budgeted was not generous enough?
If you'll note that the effective date on this budget amendment is 30 June, those are strictly placeholder accounts. The money won't be obligated, it'll fall back into fund balance. The accounts are strictly the balance, the budget, with revenues and expenses.
Then I'm going to raise again that in 2020, we paid Central Reach out of the Sand Reserve Fund. And when we did it, we did mention that, and if things turn out better than we think in 2020, we can put money back into the Sand Reserve. I know we have put some money back, but not $1.3 million. So this would be another opportunity to put money back into the Sand Reserve Fund. And after all, this next year, we're going to be taking money out of it to pay for the Lockwood Bali inlet and the intercoastal intersection work that will put sand on the beach. So I would actually prefer that this extra $303,019 go into the Sand Reserve Fund.
I considered that when I made my recommendation. And this is the year in closing general entries in an intent to make sure that things are simple and that our audit is clean and there are less risk reduction for making a year-end error. I have recommended that it be housed in Fund 50. And at such time as the audit is finalized, it would be more appropriate when you see just how big your piles are in each fund to make that kind of decision based on that.
I'm fine with that. Thank you for the explanation.
Any more questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous again, Madam Clark. Okay, Mr. Hewitt, I believe you're still up.
Yes, sir, another housekeeping detail. Gatsby 87 requires whenever you engage or you execute a lease purchase agreement that the entire asset be booked on the revenue side and the expense side for the, this, in this case, it's the Vaktor truck. We've already made the payment, procured the asset. We've already made the down payment, if you will, the first year's obligation. This is strictly enabling us, as of the execution date of that acquisition, to be able to book the asset to our capital listing. Another, if you want a clean audit, this is the one you got to approve. It's a zero-sum game.
Move to approve ordinance number 21-20.
I'll second.
Discussion, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, Madam Clark. Mr. Hewitt, you still up, number 12?
Yes, sir, while this last budget amendment is not a housekeeping exercise, it is required in order to, should the peer property offer be accepted by Mr. Bass, we've got to be able to pre-audit that earnest money and the due diligence money, should it be affirmed by Mr. Bass. That's what this budget amendment proposes. It proposes to fund the property acquisition at $3.25 million with proceeds being provided by, from a loan of $3 million flat and the fund balance appropriation of $250,000. The $50,000, of course, is the earnest money and the due diligence. $9,000 is what it's going to take to do an appraisal. And the other 200,000 from fund balance is in effect paygo money from Ureserves.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2121, amending ordinance 2113.
Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions, just that. We, at the last discussion, we determined we needed an inspection of the peer. I don't see any money allocated for that inspection.
It wasn't clear to me exactly what type of inspection or how much money was, that was going to cost. And I haven't provided for that in this budget amendment.
So then, if we take the money that's requested from the B park, how much do we actually have left in the B park fund? This kind of ties into the earlier discussion, the earlier amendment.
I'd have to look at the fund balance calculations. I did not do that in anticipation of the meeting tonight.
And approximately what would be the debt service on the $3 million that was involved?
When we had calculated that before, back of the napkin, for 3.2 million at a low interest rate, it was in a neighborhood of about $250,000. If you take $200,000 off of that, it's going to be something less than that. I have not done that math. I have not done that math.
Since we're, since we're working on this now, could it be appropriate for us to discuss what kind of inspection of the pier we want so that that can start to move forward on allocating that money? We don't meet again until August. We're already on a fairly tight timeline for due diligence. I think it would be worthwhile for us to get the ball rolling on defining that inspection that we want so that there can get, that there can be some estimates made. I mean, the pier needs, as far as I understand, when you're judging a pier, it needs both above-water and underwater examination of the pilings and possibly also some sort of a, an inspection that, that, that gives an idea of how deep the pilings are still driven. So you're looking for the integrity of the pilings underwater from insect control and possibly how deeply they, they're still driven, in addition to above, the above-water inspection. Does anybody else have any thoughts on how the pier should be inspected?
We're not under contract yet.
I, I know that. We're not under contract, and we're doing this. I, I'm just saying to move forward so that we allocate money for an inspection and not have it riding until the next meeting in August, and then suddenly we've lost another month before we can address something important.
I agree. I mean, we're appropriating, authorizing the money now so that we don't have a delay. And I don't see why we would want to have a delay in the inspection, since that's integral. We're paying the due diligence money. And I would just like to point out that there was a recent article on the pier in Folly Beach, which is more recent. The pier itself is much more recent than the pier that we have on Holden Beach. They've done repairs since it was built and actually replaced it twice. And they still found that they're going to have to take it down and rebuild it. It cost them $14 million because of damage that were done by some sort of aquatic worm. And so I think it's, we have to have this type of inspection done before we enter into this agreement, and we should allocate the funds for it as soon as possible.
Mr. Attorney, what's the due diligence date?
Give me a second, I'll find the contract. October 1, 2021.
And our August meeting date is?
Seventeenth? Eighteenth? Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Is that six weeks? If we... You guys following what I'm thinking?
That's six weeks then to approve funding, and then after that, find somebody. Whereas if we have approved funding ahead of time and authorize the town manager to move forward with finding an inspector, once the contract is returned, we don't have to wait until the August meeting to start something that's important. I mean, that's, that's my perspective.
Do you think we need to find out how much it costs before we allocate the money?
Well, right now, everything's an estimate. Then that means you action the town manager to get estimates for, to start getting estimates for what it would cost to do a pier inspection below water and above water. It's, it's one or the other, or both.
Mr. Hewitt, is, in your opinion, as we all know, we can call special meetings, but is that going to impact the audit in any way? A two-week window difference in?
No, if you're closing, if you're closing the end of October, it's not a, it's not an issue on the, on the audit. What, what is probably the most critical thing is that upon acceptance of that offer, the due diligence money has to be paid. And I don't have funding in order to write that check right now. So, you know, if you wanted to only appropriate the $50,000, you could. What I was trying to do was I was trying to get a head start on developing the loan package also. Because once due diligence, that period, if it's, if it's okay, I would have already had to done the legwork with the local government commission on making the loan financing application. So there's a couple, three moving pieces here that's beyond any type of inspection.
But I, I agree with everything you just said. And what, it seems to me that it's only logical. We've had meeting after meeting to try to push this along. We've had special meetings, we've had closed sessions. And now it just seems to me that, that what is very integral to the purchase of this, all we're asking for, or all I'm asking for, is that we determine what we want done and allocate some money for it. And I don't see why we wouldn't do that, in order to be consistent and to move this along so that we're ready to make a decision within the time that we're allocated by the contract. If somebody could explain to me why that's not a good idea, I would really appreciate that.
I agree with you, Mike. That's why...
I didn't think you were going to explain it.
Well, I mean, I've, I've put before the board the things that I'm familiar with and know how to do. I'm not familiar with how, what is required of an inspection that I have to default to judgment outside of my wheelhouse of understanding and knowledge.
Then I would say we need to seek some information of what it costs to have a below-water and above-water pier inspection so that we can allocate the necessary resources and not lose time when the time comes that we have a signed contract and we can move forward with due diligence.
I know I don't have a vote, but I'd like to put forth a suggestion. And if you, if you're mindful of putting money aside for potential expenses, I wouldn't label it for a specific item, because anybody that's bidding on that job, if they know what's already in the bucket, the price is probably more on the high side to get that full amount. I would simply suggest to you that you allocate some funds to be put aside for costs in general in regards to the potential purchase.
So you're just...
Rather than a specific part of it.
So you recommend creating a due diligence fund? Just a, a due diligence, we can't call them bucket funds.
You're going to potentially have appraisals and inspections and more than just inspections.
I'm going to weigh in on this, because I lived this life. Until we have a signed contract on the pier, you have to allocate the due diligence money. And then once we have a signed contract on the pier, then we worry about inspections and appraisals and whatever else you guys want to worry about. But right now, this board, this town, does not have a contract on the pier. So there's no use of allocating anything, there's no use talking about anything, except for due diligence money. And once you're in the due diligence period, you can do whatever you want. And if you don't like the inspections and whatever after that, we can all get out of it. But that's the way it works. So you're beating this up for no reason at all? That's my opinion. And I don't, if every pile was riding on the pier, we're not going to, I mean, is that? It can be fixed. I mean, you... That's all I've got to say.
Well, I think it's time for me to say a point of order here, because we have kind of gotten off of one thing into inspections and other things. It's just a matter of financial planning. Do you want, what do you want to do?
You got a motion, in a second.
Are you calling for the question?
Calling, in a second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
It's three to two, Madam Clerk. All right. Let's see, we're on 13? Turn the page. Number 13, Ms. Pat.
At the last board meeting, I was nicely volunteered to take the objectives and to try to create a priority list versus things that were lower priority or don't really need to be listed every year as priorities. We had decided to look at everything that was above 13 in points. So I pulled out what I consider to be, I call them evergreens. They're going to appear every year, and the board has these objectives. And they're almost all financial, other than Lockwood-Folly, continue to support Lockwood-Folly inlet access. So these are things that every year are going to appear. The town manager was concerned about the length of the list of everything above 14 and that it was an unmanageable number of priorities. That's how it looked. So I, I've organized them by points for us to understand what it is the board identified as what we thought were must-haves, should-haves. Anything that has more than 13 points, at least one person decided it's a must-have when you tally up the points. So, you know, I've, I've put them in order. There are a couple of them that we might want to reconsider whether we want them done. I'm asking people for their input. I'm just the bookkeeper on this at this point. But this is, this is what I agreed to do. And this is the order of everything by priority points. A number of them, it's all in the manager's hands now, because the board has pretty much done everything that they can do. And then there's some of them that the town manager and staff can't do anything until the board makes some decisions.
Do you, do you have a motion in mind?
Someone needs to move that we accept that these are the BOC objectives for fiscal year 2021, 2022, either as written or amended if people want to remove some of them.
Would you make that motion so that we can move along?
I move that the Board of Commissioners accepts this priority list as the BOC objectives for fiscal year 2021, 2022.
Can somebody second that for discussion, if nothing else?
Second.
All right, discussion.
Okay, if people want me to actually point out a couple that I have questions on, I don't understand exactly what's behind the requesting help from Brunswick County for a second water tower at this point. I know we had getting a needs assessment for a water tower on our list. So I, I just, I don't know enough about this requesting help on a second water tower. Maybe somebody who is closer to it can explain it. But does that need to be a priority for this year? Or is it just getting a water tower needs assessment?
Mr. Hewitt, can you...
Well, I, I'd like to eat a elephant one bite at a time. And the piece that I was going to concentrate on was completing the needs assessment, see what that says. Then, of course, bring that back to the board. Now that we've got a wholesale water agreement in place with the county, there's some details in that that may, that may relate to that. So I was just going to concentrate on the tangible item of completing the needs assessment. Then we'll, we'll see what that is.
Then can we just change that one to completing a needs assessment for a second water tower?
That, that, I didn't write these.
No, I know.
But I'm, I'm all, you know, be so bold as to divine that perhaps there was an anticipation that the needs assessment would show that there is one, and perhaps that Brunswick County would be willing to participate in the funding for that. You know, is that accurate? I, I don't know. But suffice it to say, you know, if that were to play out, I think that, you know, asking Brunswick County if they want to be players on the construction of it. And, and with today, with the technology being changed, you know, our revenues from the antenna farm that we have mounted up on this water tower are approaching about $130,000 a year. Those water towers are revenue generators. So there, there's opportunities that may present themselves to us, should that arise. I'm, I'm okay, from the manager's perspective, leaving it as written.
Okay. The only other one I had a question on was requesting help from Brunswick County to establish off-island parking and trolley bus service to the beach 100 days or more a year. I just wanted to understand if, given where we are right now in identifying our parking and everything, is this still a priority for this year? Or is this something that should be delayed for another year?
I, I can comment on that, if I may. You know, when we integrate our efforts with the Grand Strand Transportation Advisory Committee and Council and also communicate with the county, again, I didn't write that, but that type of, of guidance and objective by the board, it affords me the backing whenever I engage with those communities to evolve relationships and opportunities. As we know, there is a county site off the island that perhaps might be some, some type of partnership might be formed. And we are working that at the Grand Strand, the GSAT's level. So that's the utility I find in, in that statement, per se. It may not be 100% accurate, but at least it does serve to facilitate our transportation needs to the outside world, if you may.
Okay. Well, given your comments, then, the only two questions I had have been answered.
Okay. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous again, Madam Clerk, number 14. Madam Clerk, you're up.
Ordinance 2122, delete the Inlet and Beach Protection Board per the board's direction at the last meeting. It's just the formal work to do so. So if the board wants to do that still, you just have to make a motion to approve the ordinance.
I'd like to make a motion to delete chapter 35 of the Inlet and Beach Protection Board completely from the Holden Beach Code of ordinances.
Mr. Smith made it, and Mr. Brown seconded it. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Number 15, Madam Clerk.
Number 15 is also based on guidance from the last meeting. That just takes the part from the inlet board and brings it over to Parks and Recreation, the board directed at the last meeting.
Need a motion?
Motion. Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Unanimous. Number 16, Madam Clerk. You got anything you want to say?
There's ballot, see for you. If you guys want to vote by ballot, just make sure to sign the bottom for me so I can keep book records by law. I'll collect them and tell them when you move on, if you would like.
Madam Clerk, you gonna try to add those numbers up as we progress?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty. Audit Committee, Ms. Pat, number seventeen.
I just wanted to report that we have started audit committee meetings again. At the first meeting, we agreed that we're gonna pick up some business that was in progress. One of the pieces is working on some financial pulls, some table pulls from data that the board had, or the committee had thought might be a useful reporting tool. And one of the members was working with the town manager on that. So we're gonna bring that back and see if that can be tidied up. The idea is to present data in a more user-friendly way without causing the town any more work. We also agreed that we will proceed with amending, modifying the audit committee ordinance. It needs some work. It's needed some work for a couple of years. And we should be having a meeting sometime, I think, September to go through the thoughts and possible changes. And lastly, we started getting prepared for the upcoming annual audit.
Okay, so you, this is simply a report?
Simply a report, yes.
No motion or anything?
No.
Alright. Thank you. And number eighteen, Madam Clerk.
The proposals that you guys received, we received four back from the RFP that we put out. So at this point, staff just needs to direct on how you wanna look forward with putting out a proposal.
I have a question, if I may. Do any of these companies have anything to do with what Channel Six has been writing?
Yes, sir.
Alright, can we have an explanation of what company that is?
Pivot is what I saw on the news and that's one of the four that put a response in.
I've read all these, everyone, from cover to cover. And I think it has, I think it needs, in my opinion, needs to be a staff decision. You guys, Jeremy, Tim, you guys are the ones that's gonna have to put this puzzle together. So I don't think that we should be the ones, nor in what I would say inexperienced parking committee, other than the fact that we have some good minds on there that, and we have some past things that are proven. But I think the staff needs to ultimately make this decision as to who's the best fit for this thing. If in fact, we go through with it. It's a big decision. They, they all have good qualities and they, they all kinda run together if you, if you read into it. And, you know, it looks like from the gist of reading all of them that there is some revenue to be, to be gained. So I, I don't think that, as far as my opinion goes, that I'm in a position to make that decision. I would refer it over to, to the people that have to ultimately deal with it.
So you're looking for a recommendation? Ultimately, the decision's coming back to you then?
Right, I understand, but, I mean.
Can we make a motion to ask the town manager and his staff to review these carefully and come up with a recommendation for the board?
We can just give him a directive if that's what you wanna do.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ute, you got anything to speak to that?
Uh, no, sir.
Do we not wanna do any culling ahead of time? I mean, I'm like you, Brian, I read all four of them and there's a lot in there.
Yes.
I clearly think that two stand out as above the other two. But I don't think we really wanna get into a big discussion of that at this point, but there, there's not any of them that we just say, this one doesn't work? Just do them all?
That's my opinion as well. I think there is two and the staff will figure it out. I, I just don't wanna be the guy that makes that decision, but I, I could definitely eliminate a call.
Ms. Ferguson, you have anything you want to?
That's why I'm not on this one.
Okay.
I'll raise my hand on that one. I think it'd be pretty, a pretty straightforward process to set up a half dozen, eight criteria and to perform some type of assessment to develop a decision selection matrix for the board and, and rank them in hierarchy order. It will have to plow through, it'll take some time. I, I would anticipate that we could do it in time for the next board meeting though.
Make it down like this.
Invite an agreement for the staff to do that?
Yeah.
Yes. Can we move on to number nineteen? Alright. Ms. Pat?
This is actually Rick and me both, but there's been so much about golf carts this year. And one of the things about seeing whether or not our police force and all of our communication attempts are making a difference is to see whether or not it's having an impact on infractions. So I put together a list of what I determined to be violation descriptions that it would be very helpful for the board to see what is going on on golf carts every week during season and as the week progresses in terms of parking violations, underage driver violations, seatbelt infractions, child seat infractions, unsafe driving, unlicensed vehicles. Was there a warning or a ticket given? The date and day of the week? I, I would expect that with our education and our force on the road, that you catch people early in the week and they don't do it again. But unless we see details specific to golf carts, we don't really know if there's been a significant positive impact. So I'm asking for the board to make a request that we get this type of information brought to us at the monthly report, but it'll break it down by the week so we can see what kind of impact the actions are having. And if things between Sunday and Tuesday all get hunky-dory, obviously, we got it in control. If, if a few weeks of data don't show that it's making an impact, then the question becomes, okay, what else can we do? So it's a simple matter of asking for the board to approve a request for golf cart infraction details from the chief so that we can, we can have some measurements that demonstrate that things are in the right direction or need some more thought and work.
That sounds like you, you've had a conversation with Jeremy as to what all
No, no.
Development of that type of data would entail. Absent that, you probably need to make sure that we get the chief's opinion on what all that would take.
Well, it's why we're here and Jeremy is here. I knew he'd be here.
Chief, will you speak to that?
Oh, I will, I didn't know when it was appropriate to me. So I do completely understand what you're, oh, that's not too loud. I completely understand what you're going for. The problem is, the way we data track, we do not data track by type of vehicle. We do not stop or cite someone because of the type of vehicle they're driving. So we, we have no data tracking on that. The same as if we get a, a noise ordinance violation, we do not data track whether it was country music or jazz music. You know, if we, if we respond to a dog on the beach, we do not document the breed of the dog. So when we make a traffic stop, the, the violation, you know, whether it's seatbelt or, or any of those things that you listed here are absolutely documented. The type of vehicle, though, is just, it's not something we document because it's just, it's, it's not important to, to what we do. We're, we're trying to keep everybody safe, not just golf carts safe. We have to enforce the law for every vehicle, not just golf carts. So it's just, it's just not how we data track. I mean.
What we're safe to add that?
Technically, we could add it. I mean, we'd have to do, I don't know, I'd have to sit down and try to figure it out. Can we do it? Yes. Is it a good idea? No. I, I don't like it. I think it's putting us down a bad road, but that's just my opinion of it.
And I think that unless we see if we're making improvements, we're not gonna know. And again, you get past six, seven hundred block, which is my territory that I'm out on a lot, and I see a lot of stuff going on all week. So it's not necessarily getting better from what I'm seeing. It doesn't mean that you're not having a positive impact on other parts of the island, but it's just not getting down to my territory. And how are we gonna know if we don't start getting golf cart specific data?
So, and that, you're saying if it's working in one area and not the other, we also need to start tracking where, where we're getting these violations?
That's why, yeah, what I'm saying is.
I mean, I'm, I'm gonna need more, I mean, I'm not trying to be, I need more staff to even keep up with that if, if we're gonna go down this road.
Jeremy, it's, it's a few little further west than I do.
Right.
But in the span of thirty minutes while I'm mowing my yard, which is about the side of the posting steps, I had pictures of eleven golf carts going by. None of them were wearing seatbelts, kids not properly retained. And I had one make a gesture to me when I was emptying my bag into the, the garden's can to, and I said, please put on your seatbelts and you seem to be offended. So, you know, it's not if it was one out of ten that go by that was an infraction, I'd say, okay, we just got some people that are not following the rules. But it's the opposite.
Right.
It's maybe one out of ten that does. So it can't be that two of us on Ocean Boulevard see that many carts go by, especially if you sit at the general store, cause that seems to be, or the pier, that seems to be where they go. So it's, it's pretty evident there's, there's a lot of it going on and I'd like to, just, I mean, specific, you know, how many or which particular infraction that maybe just every officer say, well, we stopped X number of golf carts and it's proof. I mean, I'm.
Can I ask you this about the seatbelts?
Actually made seatbelts. And I've had seven seatbelt tickets. So I understand.
Right.
It's something that is a state law.
Can, can I ask you this about the seatbelts?
Twenty years it's been a state law. So there's no excuse for not wearing.
Right. The, the golf carts, they have no shoulder straps. They're, they're lap belts. It's the way they're installed in them.
I can see that.
And, and that's what I was gonna ask. Can you see that on, on all of the occupants?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm happy to show these photographs with you.
I believe you, I'm just, I'm just asking, so.
Yes, sir. I, I, I'm, you know, when you're standing right at the end of the road, you can see if they've got a lap belt.
Right. But it's, and here, the same thing. It is a law. Why do you have seven? And I'm not picking on you. You have seven seatbelt tickets because you opted not to wear a seatbelt. We can write a million seatbelt tickets. If they opt not to wear a seatbelt, they've opt, I mean, we can keep writing them, but I just, I think this data tracking is, is not gonna solve anything. If grown adults choose not to wear a seatbelt, that's their decision. We can still write them tickets for it and we still will continue to write tickets for it. But that is, that's still their decision. If a grown adult gets on a motorcycle without a helmet, that is his or her decision. Unfortunately for the kids, it is not their decision when they don't strap them into child safety seats. And I agree with that. But that, that is happening too. I don't know if y'all are seeing it, but we are. And every time I'm getting an opportunity, these, these are car seats on low-speed vehicles. It is happening. We are seeing it. If no one else is, I'm not sure why, but I promise you our officers are seeing it.
Again, Jeremy, it's the ratio.
I understand.
I want to abide by the law and I want to, just for the safety of the two.
Yeah. And like I said, I have no problem continuing, we, we're gonna continue to enforce it. We're doing everything we can for it. I have no problem with that. I'm not asking any of our officers to back off of it. I just, for me, for the department, this tasker just adds more to the problems and I don't see myself where it brings any solu. I understand what you're going for and I, I too am trying to keep the town safe, but it's more than just golf carts. It's motor vehicles, it's pedestrians, it's bicycles. You know, I, it's just, that, that's just my two cents worth and, and I'll, I'll step out and I'm, I'm done now, I guess.
Any more comments from the committee?
If there's, if there's no motion for this, then we move on.
Okay, we're good at number twenty. I went, you got a minute? You got a minute?
This one works.
So this one's okay to announce?
Yes, that one we should. That one we should.
Is this what I'm now?
Yes.
Okay, we have a report for the Board of Adjustment. Congratulations to Jack Loman as a regular member and Richard Roberts and Aldo. Aldo. As alternates. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, how you gonna, how you gonna do that?
If the board wants to just write it on a piece of paper and I can say.
But these three are on?
These three, yeah.
Okay, Gracie, Melanie, and Mike, congratulations. You're on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, but we still have some more voting to do to fill the rest. So Commissioners, we're gonna ask you to write on a piece of paper, what, what instructions?
Susanna Tucker and Rose Marie are the two that you're voting between. Susanna is a current member on that board. So it's between Susanna and Rose Marie. If you could write one of those names on it, make sure to find it and then pass that one to me, too.
There's one here. Alright, congratulations, Susanna. You will be serving on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
These three are the regular members, that's.
Alright.
And then we have a tie between the rest of us, but. But Mark, well, Mark is definitely the first alternate and then the tie is for this. Like he just got put on video, so I figured you won't crash him out. So it's a tie between.
Oh, sister name?
Yeah, cause he got.
Okay. Okay, you correct me if I'm wrong. Alright, Planning and Zoning regular members will be Wade Coleman, Sylvia Pate, Pete Palace, alternate Mark Francis. And now we're gonna have to vote between John Kane, Ann Freeman, and Shannon Ward.
So one person between John Kane, Ann Freeman, and Shannon Ward. You have to write and find it for me.
Thank you.
That's gonna be John Kane.
Alright, congratulations, John Kane. You will also be serving on the Planning and Zoning Board. Alright? Alright. Okay, golf carts, number nineteen, we've done. Are we ready for the attorney and golf carts? Is that where we are?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Mr. Attorney?
I think.
Put some legalese on us.
Commissioner Smith had asked whether or not it's legal to require the golf carts rental companies purchase a Holden Beach yearly sticker and require.
Can you guys hear in the back? Okay?
Try it everywhere.
Try this one now. Don't, don't touch it.
Okay. You hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right. So Commissioner Smith says he'd like to request the town attorney if it's legal to require the golf cart rental companies, uh, purchase a Holden Beach yearly sticker permit and require them to complete a safety, state compliance inspection before each rental and have a rules and regulations form for renters that renters must sign off on when they receive the rental cart. So I did some research on it. North Carolina General Statute, I'm gonna read it to you. I have copies here, extra copies if, if you'd like copies. The North Carolina General Statute, section one sixty A dash three hundred point six, says under subsection A, it says notwithstanding provisions of GS twenty dash fifty and GS twenty dash fifty-four, and I'm gonna stop. Those are just general registration issues. So you can ignore those. A city may, by ordinance, regulate the operation of golf courts, golf carts as defined by GS twenty dash four, on any public street, road, or highway where the speed limit is thirty-five miles per hour or less within its municipal limits or on any property owned or leased by the city. So and under, under subsection B, it says by ordinance, the city may require the registration of golf carts, charge a fee for the registration, specify who is authorized to operate golf carts, and specify the required equipment, load limits, and the hours and methods of operation of golf carts. No person less than sixteen years of age may operate a golf cart on a public street, road, or highway. So if you did nothing, it's, it's a state violation if somebody is sixteen or under and operates a golf cart. So I think in answer to, uh, Commissioner Smith's questions and, uh, also Commissioner Kwiatkowski, if, if you, if the city develops an ordinance to regulate the golf course, I mean, golf carts, um, and it's within the purview of the state statute, you're good to go. And, um, you know, I come home, I'm gonna be a faculty just for a couple seconds. So I come over that bridge going home every day. And, um, it's getting worse in so, insofar as you've got infants, essentially sitting in the front and, uh, no car seats. And there's just not a whole lot of protection, as you know, from a golf cart. And I, unfortunately, I think it's only a matter of time until we got a real, somebody has a real tragedy. And this, the properly designed town regulation coupled with the requirement that these, uh, carts be registered and the regulation is, is explained to whoever the operator is and that they, that operator must be sixteen or over. I realize, Jeremy, that, that's gonna cause possible, uh, manpower issues. But, uh, you not only have the owner of the cart certifying to compliance with this law and any regulation that the town implements, but you also have, uh, the rental ag- agency who's not hopefully renting to somebody who's fifteen years old or fourteen years old. So I think it can be done. And, uh, in fact, I know it can be done within, uh, North Carolina General Statute. Any questions?
No, thank you, sir.
You said it could be operated by anybody sixteen years or older. That's with a license, I presume, or is that, because you didn't specify?
I didn't say that. It just says sixteen or older. Um, and I would have to assume that, uh, if they meant someone sixteen and in possession of a North Carolina driver's license, the state legislature likely would've said it, but they didn't. So.
If I may, uh, with permission of the commissioners, we have a retired NC DOT enforcement officer that specialized in golf carts and so forth and so on. Without, if there's any objection, tell me, but would you come to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and, and, uh, share with us what you may want?
Yes, sir. My name's Kevin Peak. Uh, I'm a retired lieutenant with Division Motor Vehicles License and Theft Bureau. We were the agency that regulated manufacturing of low-speed vehicles. I agree with the general statute that you're speaking of, sir. However, there is a low-speed vehicle statute on the books in North Carolina and what you're operating under is the low-speed vehicle statute, which requires those vehicles to be licensed and registered and insured and North Carolina state inspections provided each year. And what I may add, I'm also the manager of a rental company locally that's been operating here on Holden Beach for the last twelve years. We do, in fact, have contracts that we put in place that are signed by the renters. It's visible on our websites. We do weekly turnovers with your rental houses here. People sign such contracts. They do have rules and regulations that are put before them. As the chief indicated previously, you can't ride with them twenty-four hours a day when you rent the car to them. They're grown folks. Our contract requires you to be twenty-one or above. When you're twenty-one years old and you rent the car, you choose to get out there and drink a, a Michelob Light while you're riding, then that's a personal choice you made. It has nothing to do with the rental company. What you're speaking of, sir, I, I beg to differ with you. Uh, I don't hold a jurisdiction degree. But what, what you're speaking of is what they're doing in the county, in Brunswick County, and there's a clear-cut difference by definition between a low-speed vehicle and a golf cart. What you're seeing here are low-speed vehicles. If there's a golf cart here operating, it is illegal and it doesn't have a license plate on it. You're seeing what is a low-speed vehicle that by definition of Division Motor Vehicle is a motor vehicle. And it's handled accordingly as a motor vehicle, just like the vehicle you drove up on to come to this meeting. So it's a, it's a different ballgame. And I encourage, you know, I, it's unfortunate. I really didn't wanna come up here and get involved in this meeting from this standpoint. I didn't wanna bring any additional time to your meeting. I would prefer to speak behind closed doors with the, with the members of, of the police department or the, the legal team or the commissioners and help come up with a solution. I think it's unfortunate that we've got some people that are not educated about what they're talking about or what's going on. And unfortunately, those are leading to further confusion within the town and the county and within local government when folks are trying to reach out to someone to provide them with the proper information.
All right. Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard you say you'd volunteer to help.
I will. I'll, I'll volunteer my time. I'm retired. I, I am the manager of Island Park, and I was here locally. But I'll be glad to sit down with any commissioner, review the general statutes. I'll be glad to sit down with the police department. You know, I'll be glad to help formulate any kind of plan to help the situation.
Okay.
But the arguments that I've heard thus far, I, I don't see where they're arguing, to be honest with you.
Okay. Thanks, sir. All right, any more commissioners wanna speak? Police chief? Anybody? Ms. Hewitt?
Yeah, I, I think I- Go ahead.
I'd be interested in following up with you as to, as to how the property taxes on those golf carts are collected. I know that I just re-registered my vehicle and I got to pay, um, my property tax before I could, um, get my vehicle re-registered. And I know that we're in the middle of our year-end, um, thing and I was just wanting to make sure tax collectors be interested in if that same kind, since it's a licensed vehicle, if that same thing works. I, I'm naive as to how that is and I'll be glad to follow up with that.
And again, that, that wouldn't be a question for me as much as it would be the tax office. But I can say the Brunswick County Tax Office does have an appraisal system set up that causes those low-speed vehicles to be taxed. And you, when you buy one, you pay highway use tax just as you do on a motor vehicle. And then you have property tax handed in. You don't pay sales tax. You pay sales tax on a golf cart. This is defined as a motor vehicle stable car.
I guess I, I would just say it seems to me that there are enough regulations on the books that we don't have to put any new ones in there. And that if we enforced the ones we have, we would be successful. And the idea, I, I understand that people have free will and can do what they want. But I also understand that you guys gave out one ticket for somebody stopping on the bridge to take a picture and everybody on this island knew it. And I don't know anybody who stopped on that bridge since then to take another picture. So if we put out there that we're giving out summonses, we're giving strict attention to golf carts and who drives them and whether they have the right equipment, that'll take part of the, that'll do a big, go a big way to solve the problem. And if you give out a couple of tickets and publicize that, that'll go a little further. And, and I think we'll be able to accomplish the goal without you having to use too much of your resources and us using too much of our time.
All right. Are we ready to move on to number twenty-three? Mr. Evans?
This is one time, most time I come up here, I feel like I'm in a hot, hot stakes poker game with no cards and ask the bluff. But this is one time when I don't think it's the case. All right. Y'all are, y'all are, tonight, I would like to ask y'all to decide whether or not you want to accept the text amendment under one fifty-seven points oh sixty OD seven, lot coverage A, B, and add the additional number C for pools that will prohibit them within the front yard setbacks. All right? There's a pretty good write-up. I did a pretty good write-up and I can just, I can read this and I think it'll kinda lay it all out. But it, this is, this is a text amendment that was generated by staff and it was supported by, by Commissioner Sullivan and by the Planning Board Chair, Vicky Myers. The Planning Board heard this, this text amendment and they were unanimous in their decision as well. And they've already written a, um, a statement as such to say that it is in line with our land use plan, which we will bring forward at the next meeting. But at this meeting, you're asked to decide whether you want to include this text amendment and to set a public hearing to then determine whether you wanna vote yea or nay. Now, the, the history behind this is, is that when I got here in 2010, someone applied for a swimming pool to be put in the front yard. We denied it. It went before the Board of Adjustments. Some attorneys showed up. Some other people showed up. And they read me the ordinance and taught me a lesson about not reading ordinances. And in that particular case, what we determined was, was that, uh, that pools were allowed and they were allowed by an ordinance. So over the years, I voiced my concern about those pools not being allowed in the front yard. Could've been the fact I think that they're extremely dangerous, which is what I do think, which is what I thought to start off with. Think it could've been a little bit of, you know, not being caught being wrong. But anyway, the basic line is, is that when that ordinance was changed, when the portion B was added into the ordinance and we went back and looked at it, it was never intended to be, give the ability to write an exception that would allow swimming pools in the front yard setback. It was designed to eliminate impervious area in the front yard to alleviate stormwater mostly on Ocean Boulevard and the other places. And that ordinance still was not refined as much as it could and affects other places in other areas like yacht watch and other things. We run into it all the time. But that same ordinance, that same ordinance inadvertently allowed, gave a provision that allowed for swimming pools in the front yard. This new text amendment, if y'all choo- so choose, will remove the ability to allow that exception.
Tim, what's your reasoning for that?
Okay.
Why can't you have a pool in your front yard?
All right, here's where we go. Staff, I wrote a little, put a little write-up in. The staff believes that the above-mentioned text amendment will help ensure a healthy, safe environment for the town of Holden Beach. While pools have become a staple in the rental business, most lots, without exception, would not accommodate pools. And it is the staff's belief that the town never intended to provide exception for pools in the front yard. As a matter of record, staff has concluded that the ordinance allowing for such use was meant to keep clear those front yard setbacks of any such amenities to secure best-case scenarios for impervious runoff. The town of Holden Beach has recognized in the past, and it is true, true currently, that overflow parking is a must at most rental locations. The state of North Carolina makes it extremely hard to control the number of people located in a dwelling. The town does have a mandatory parking requirement. It is imperative that the town recognize that the benefits of keeping as much space open for occupants for the use of parking. Staff believes that there is a real danger in swimming pools located so close to the street right-of-way as many, as many are in the twenty-five-foot setback area. Providing, providing direct access for amenity that has been declared and identified as an attractive nuisance. So that exception did exactly that. And it says pools are considered so dangerous in, in North Carolina that the building code adopts an entire appendix just to the safety installation on multiple, uh, levels for the installation of them because they are considered attractive nuisance. And our attorney could help us out with that one, but I think it was Mr. Edwards who, who, the famous person we had that ran for president one time, who made a lot of money off of swimming pools. So anyway, it, so section one fifty-seven point oh sixty-one D six and one fifty-seven point oh sixty D seven is what, is, is the ordinance that allows for what the staff believes is the unintended exception. And it can be corrected by the, by the text amendment that I have provided for you, which is one fifty-seven point oh sixty D seven, one fifty-six point oh six one D six, the addition of the C under each one of them, which pools, which would state pools are prohibited within the front yard setbacks. Now let me clear something up. If you have a lot and the lot is big enough that your setbacks are far enough away that you're outside of that setback, you can have that pool. But what's happening is, is where we've got it, where we've written it, most of these lots, because property owners don't go as far back as they can, they try to come forward if they can. Because if you had that room, where would you put the pool? In the back. But when they can't put it in the back, they're putting it right in the front. And we've got some of them down there that I can literally leap off the sidewalk and into the swimming pool. Well, hold it. Twenty-five years ago, I could leap off the sidewalk and into that swimming pool. And anybody who don't think it's an attractive nuisance, and this does not go to the intelligent levels of anybody, but it does go to, to what youths do, I can promise you that I have a scar on my elbow from where at Ocean Isle, and I don't know if David ever participated or not.
Oh, no.
But at Ocean Isle, on Sundays, after we had worked in tobacco fields all week and usually had a second job somewhere else, on Sundays, we would get to go, after church, we would get to go to the beach. And we would gather up in Ash in a pickup truck or something and we would go to Ocean Isle on the beach. At the end of the day, I don't know when it started, but at some point in time, the first swimming pool that I think I ever saw that, at a apartment building, was built at the far end of Ocean Isle. We would get in that truck, and they actually had a little security person. We would get in that truck, drive down to that parking lot. All of us jump out and run to that swimming pool while that security guy was trying to stop us and go down that sliding board into that swimming pool. And we did it every Sunday because that swimming pool was there. Now my scar came because being swift to foot, I was first and they played a trick on us. And when I was halfway down the sliding board, I realized there was no water in the pool. My point being is that it's an attractive nuisance.
That explains a lot.
Yeah. You give it the opportunity, someone will make that mistake.
So it's, it's not the imperviousness, it's the parking that you're concerned about?
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about this. Is that while the product under every stormwater plan you have says that a swimming pool is pervious. Under a flood, a swimming pool's not pervious. It fills up, the water comes out of it. I'm concerned that swimming pools will, that, we make sure they don't take up the required parking places. But they are definitely taking up all the overflow parking places. Most, everybody knows, and it's been argued more- Most, everybody knows, and it's been argued more than once, that when people come down here on the summer, and they bring as many people as they can, it is inevitable that they have as much room as they can to park. It is also known, the number of parking places that we have that are available and the number of parking places that are permanent, what happens to those, especially on busy weekends, if they don't have available places where they're at? And I promise you, they then use their golf carts, go back and forth to their car. But, but seriously, it, it is a big issue. We can, we can see it. We know that, one, we just issued a house, a permit for, for a pool that's going in right now. We know how many cars were being parked there before, because we used to laugh about it when we went by, and now how many can't be parked there. But the number of bedrooms did not go down. Their number of required spaces didn't go down, but their number of available parking on that lot did. So I think it adds to the stormwater problem, I think it adds to a safety problem, and I think it's going to add to our parking problem. That's my staff's opinion.
So as far as the property, I mean, if you own the property, you're telling them they can't do what they want to on their property in the, in the setback?
Well, here's the thing, the setback's a setback. You couldn't put a deck there.
Correct.
But this, that, that exception that they wrote, or what they wrote in that B inadvertently gave an exception to that. So, so you can't put it, you can't put a, you know what I mean, you can't put decks and other structures in there, you know what I mean? So it's not really, and just because you have a piece of property don't guarantee you can do certain things on a piece of property. Some properties don't allow for those things, while other properties will allow, based on setbacks and that kind of stuff. Yeah.
I got one question. Um, and I've, this is, I've been a part of this three or four times, i.e. Segal Street Drive, whatever. When you have a house, a lot that you can build a house on, then it's understandable that that is going to take your parking away. It makes perfect sense. When you have a lot that's unbuildable, and you combine it with a lot that is actually beside your residence, that you couldn't build a house on, or any, you know, anything for that matter, I mean, would you, would there, could we, would you have an exception, or would you be open to having an exception for that case?
You have two legal, you have two legal things there. One is if you combine the two lots, combine the one that you can't build on to the one that you can build on, as long as that there's a side yard big enough, you can have a pool in the side yard. This would just eliminate it from the front. Do you understand? The other option is, is that if you have that lot over there, and you, you're still going to have to combine it, because our ordinance don't allow for a single structure by itself on a lot, you'd have to have the primary structure first, if, if you do that, then you can go for variance. But it would have to be part of that lot. Do you follow what I'm saying? But you could still go for variance if you wanted it to encroach in a setback. Everybody, everybody that wants a swimming pool in the front yard could go for variance. Do you follow what I'm saying? Just like you can on every ordinance, you can apply for variance. Now, they got to meet the requirements of the variance, requirements on the state of North Carolina, which is a little tough, but they could.
If I remember correctly, there's some verbiage in there that if you can use your property without the variance being given, you're not supposed to give them a variance.
That's the, the law basically is that.
So it'd be tough to give a variance.
Well, it's tough to get a variance anyway, you got to prove a hardship. You know, just because there'd be an issue, don't mean there'd be an issue the way that should be. You have to really prove a hardship in order to get a variance.
You commissioners want to take this under advisement, or do you want to make some kind of an act?
I make a motion that we accept the amended text of section 157.060D7 and 157.061D6.
And set a public hearing for the August meeting.
Yeah, you need, you got to set a public hearing, the public's got to have an.
That's, that's, I second it.
All right, we got a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right, it sounded to me like a quarter won. All right. Thank you, Mr. Evans. Number 24, there's an opportunity for anyone in the audience, you want to speak about anything, if you would like to be recognized and come to the microphone. Now, you had an opportunity to speak to agenda items earlier, but now you can speak about anything. Anybody? Going once? Going twice? It is gone. It's the number 25, Town Manager's report, Mr. Hewitt.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, I'd like to make everyone aware that on our FEMA capital storm damage repair project, the local government commission approved those special obligation bonds in the amount of $27.7 million last Tuesday. We have closed on that financing on Friday, and the notice of award has been issued to weeks dredging earlier today. So it looks like we are going to have a project beginning on or about the 15th of November. Segal Street paving, I've issued a notice to proceed to Right Angle Engineering to move forward with the necessary surveying for the design work earlier this month, and Mr. Green informed me today, or has requested a progress meeting next week, and that he advises that he's close to being ready to advertise for the lift station two upgrade. That's all I have to note.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Hewitt? Mayor's comments? I have a bone to pick with our Assistant Town Manager. She has been assigned every week this year to do a no rain dance, and she's done a real good job on Sundays until this past weekend, and absolutely did a terrible job.
I tweaked my knee at tennis on Saturday, Mayor.
We were expecting a tremendous crowd Sunday, and the Thames are our biggest drawing band, I believe, is that correct? And so there are a lot of disappointed people, but we've been fortunate so far this summer, and everybody's had a big time there. And anyway, overall, I just think the summer's going extremely well. In my lifetime, I've never seen as many people here. I've never seen as many new boats. I've never seen as many umbrellas and, what do you call those things that flap and make noise? Shimboobies or boobies? They didn't come out right. Shimboobies? How do you say it?
Shh, booby.
Sorry, ladies. Anyway, the oceanfront's colorful on sunny days. And the police department and, and our maintenance people, I, you know, you see everybody working hard and staff working hard. I just, you know, after going through last year and all the problems, I just think we've come so far this year. Whenever you talk to the renters, the day trippers, everybody seems to be in a much better mood this year, in my mind, than, than the previous couple of years. And I just appreciate everything everybody's doing. And another trend that I feel like is worthy of being mentioned is the number of smokers on the beach strand. I go up and down the beach strand a right good bit, and it used to be pretty common to see people, you know, puffing, smoking, and whatever, and you still see a few, but it's very noticeable to me how the number of those smokers has reduced, and the number of cigarette butts that you see on the beach, you just hardly ever see one anymore. So there's a big change there. And the number of dogs, I think, overall violating our dog ordinance on the beach strand, even those numbers, I think, have come down. So the compliance of our overall strand ordinances, I think, is much better. It's just amazing to me how much people seem to appreciate the difference between Holden Beach and some of our neighboring beaches, and I'm proud of this place. Mr. Brown?
I'd just like to say congrats to all you new board members. Just remember you're, you're, you're working for your town, your home, and you always want to do what's best for that. And I've listened real closely about the golf carts, you know what I'm saying? And, you know, I woke up one morning about a week ago, first thing I run into is a golf cart. I'm not going to say it for the sake, okay? I just run, runs into it, okay? But it go a little further up the road, it come to bicycle, it just went right in front of me. You know? So then I say, well, things going to get better here, so I pull out on Ocean Boulevard and there's a garbage truck. So we're, we're in the heat of it right now. This is summertime, everybody's coming to the beach, and we just, we just need to, to be, you know, have, keep that on our mind, you know? I know, you know, there's a lot, both ways, I've heard it both ways on the golf carts, you know what I'm saying? And, and I want to stay clear of that, just as clear of it as I can, okay? And because there's a lot of things going on. It's like with the bicycles, you know? I'm, I'm hoping, you know, what I'm hoping is like, when we get Ocean Boulevard paved, that's going to eliminate some of that, you know, some of the, the running, they're going to have some, you know, you're going to have your, your place to, to work, you know? You have your bike pass, you have your running pass, you know, and that's probably going to, you know, help. And we're, we're not here, you know, we're not here to, I, I understand, I got your call today, and I, I read you loud and clear, I, I heard everything, and, and the golf carts, you know, it, it is somewhat of a, a little thing, but, but it's nothing that can't be worked out. We just got to realize that, like, listen, we're just, it's the heat of summer. We have to slow down a little bit, you know what I'm saying? Yeah, I get behind one of them things, man, 20 miles an hour, and it seems like it takes forever, two or three minutes there, you know what I'm saying? We, we're on the ridge, we get on out of here, you know? But everybody stay safe, watch out for your neighbors, you know, and, and just good to have a, a good turnout here, and, and have a good summer.
Mr. Smith?
Well, I want to, I want to thank our staff, especially for all the extra time that they've had to spend, and all the special meetings we've had in the past month. I know your time is important to you, but I appreciate you putting up with us, having as many meetings as we did, and, and seemed to support us. I want to thank all the citizens that showed up for our public hearing on the pier. It was really nice to see that number of people show up to voice their concerns, and I appreciated the positive comments. I want to thank everybody who was here this evening. I mean, it just shows that, as we've discussed before, we've got a lot of smart people here on Holden Beach, and it's good to have them come and want to work on our committees and boards. It's, it really makes me proud to be, be part of this community. Again, I want to thank the Mayor and Christie for their quick response Sunday. We were all geared up for some music, but we all saw the storm coming, and y'all made a good call quickly, and that allowed everybody to, to make other arrangements. That was good that you got that broadcasted and that taken care of. I want to, I thank all the, the staff and commissioners and our police chief for doing all they can to keep the golf carts safe. I mean, that's, that's, like I said, it's, it's a little bit on a personal note, because I've seen what can happen. So, and the 4th of July traffic, that was on my list too, and you made that point today for, it's one of the first times I've ever been here on the 4th of July, and I tried to avoid it because of the number of people, I let the kids handle that. But the traffic moved, I guess, as, as well as you could ever expect it to be. And your guys were, your night shift guys are great, your day shift guys and gals have been doing a great job, Jeremy, so I just want to thank you and the, and the rest of our staff for, for doing what they do.
Brian?
I want to thank everybody for showing up. I greatly appreciate the input of the public and always will. I want to say just a few words about the property that's available still on Holden Beach, the piers included in that. All, the whole time I've been coming down here since I was a kid, this has been a family beach, that's what everybody's always said. Well, I'm, I'm a contractor here too, so I've got a good hand in putting something on every lot that's available on the island. With that being said, I think we have, whatever the cost, an obligation to preserve something that we can get our hands on now to keep some open space available on this island for the public to use and the residents. I'd be glad to put a house on every oceanfront lot at the pier if that's what was going to happen, but in my heart of hearts, no matter what, I, it's not going to go on my watch. There's some other areas on the island that are very valuable, around the boat ramp and various places. Anything that we can, can possibly look at, at, at purchasing and trying to keep whole, whether we put a parking lot on it or not, just making it available to not only the, the residents and the, and the vacationers that come here, but also to, to everybody in North Carolina and from far reaches. We all deserve to use this place. And if we put a house on every lot on this island, I don't know what's going to be left to use. We owe it to the people that follow us to preserve something that's left of this beach. And I am, no matter what comes of the pier, the pylons, or the, the shape of the building, or whatever, I'm totally in favor of preserving it as it is for as long as we can for everybody to come and enjoy. And I, it's, it's just weighing on me that, that we're going to let this slip out from unders. Because when all the houses, all the lots are built out, everything's gone, I don't know where people are going to go. I don't know how they're going to come and enjoy the beach. You know, we just owe it, at least to protect some of it, we need to try. If it costs us a few bucks, then, then it does. But, and that's my opinion, but hopefully I represent most of this town as a whole. So thanks for coming out, thanks for everybody volunteering for the boards. It's a, it's a big help to have everybody's opinion on this stuff. It's hard sitting up here, making decisions on, you know, for just, just something you feel passionate about. If it's not, if it's not for the benefit of everybody that put us up here, then we need, we're going to have to make the right decision. So thanks, and I appreciate the staff, as usual, for all your hard work. This is a time-consuming job for everyone, and we don't, it doesn't go unnoticed, and we appreciate it. And the board, the same. All you guys, we, we do the best that we can do together, and I appreciate it.
All right. Yeah. Well, I, I would just like to point out that when, when David gave his presentation, he kind of skimmed over the fact that we were going to be able to do the renourishment of the Central Reach project for $27 million. In the past four years, since the Central Reach project was done, the federal government, FEMA, estimated and authorized us to spend four, almost $46 million on the damage. And the reason why we won't have to spend that $46 million and save almost $20 million is because of the work that David and Christie and the staff do. They've, they've been able to consolidate the four storms into one mobilization package. When I say it, it, it just rolls out of my mouth, but the work that it takes to get that accomplished is astronomical. And so I, I just want everybody to understand that we're very fortunate, and, and as everybody on the board has already said, the staff, whether it's, you know, the administrative staff, the police staff, the people who work on the roads, everybody does a hell of a job for us here. And, you know, it's, it's hard. And, you know, it's hard to actually thank them enough for the job they did, but here's a, you know, a simple look at it. We're getting the job for $20 million than it was authorized for. Where do you get that kinda return or where do you get that kinda reduction in cost? The other thing I'd like to say is to go back to what Brian said. We... What we do is we have an obligation to do what's best for the people who voted for us and live here. And we can do as good as we can for the rest of the people. We try and we should try to preserve Holden Beach. But Holden Beach isn't the Holden Beach that anybody who grew up here or been coming here for 50 years is familiar with. It changed. Everything changes. And we don't have an obligation to make it available to people from far and wide. We can try and as long as it's feasible and viable, I'm all for it. But we have to use common sense and we have to be fiscally responsible in that evaluation.
It's bad?
Well, I also came prepared to talk about the pier purchase. So I finish up and I've got several things to say. Everybody has heard the basic terms now. They know the debt service estimate. You know that we're up for a period of due diligence that's gonna tell us, you know, what state the property's in. You've heard it's not the board's intent to increase taxes to pay for the pier. You've heard about grants possibly being available. We've heard from about 50 of you formally, through public comment, either written or at the meeting, majority do seem to support the purchase, but a lot of people have conditions, reservations about potential costs, want the property to support itself, express concern they haven't been shown a plan. Okay? At this point, I can't say with certainty that the assumptions that Commissioner Sullivan and I listed in our paper, purchase the property, bring it up to code, lease the pier and building, is it more or less as is, implement paid parking so that it's kinda revenue neutral, is still gonna be the plan. I mean, you've heard, you've heard some commissioners say that even if the building and the pier are in bad condition or tear downs, we still should purchase this property. But tear downs don't bring in lease income, so we don't have that revenue neutral for a number of years. The rationale for the purchase has been based on land value, which is good, but its land value is if the property is shovel-ready to build on and that's not what that property is. So it's not our intent to raise property taxes to pay, but that doesn't mean we will have the money on hand to fund whatever needed fixes, due diligence turn up. We won't know until we get those assessments. But even paying debt service from the B part revenue flow, if we don't have leasable properties and parking income, isn't gonna work. Our B part right now, it's healthy. Our B part revenue is higher than it's ever been. But it's paying for Central Reach beach renourishment, which is about $1.3 million, which is almost half of what we get in occupancy tax revenue. It also has to cover our annual tourism-related program and service expenses, beach and do maintenance and administrative and personnel costs. That pretty much takes up the rest of the B part revenue from occupancy tax. This year, we used half a million from B part fund reserves to start the first payment for the Army Corps study, which we all agreed was necessary. Next year, the cost is gonna be 800, 800K. Year three will be 200K. We're gonna be borrowing 700K later this year for bike lanes, okay? So that debt service will also be added. And then there's discussion about purchasing property for paid parking and it's gonna be another debt that we add. And I am not implying that our town is not managing our budget and our money well because we are. But I do see that we're taking on a lot of debt at once. Everything came to a head this year. Sod's law, as the British would say. I think we need to look at everything together and not just one transaction after another. When we discuss the budget, I usually have four categories in mind. Debt service obligations are top priority. You gotta pay your debts. Then you gotta keep town services and operations going. You gotta maintain infrastructure, which includes the beach. Then there's the rest, okay? I have categories for the rest, just like we do for our priorities, our VOC priorities. Must-have, should-have, nice-to-have. Beach access are must-haves if a significant stretch of our engineered beach isn't served adequately. Bike lanes are a should-have and they've gotten strong support from our public in the land use plan survey, in the ongoing parks and rec stuff. So that's a should-have. From my perspective, the beach, the pier property is a nice-to-have. I get keeping that 350 feet open, believe me. Every time I drive by it, my eye goes to the sea. I understand that. But there are so many unknowns and probable expenses that must be precise before we purchase it. If our property owners support the pier purchase, understanding the uncertainties and the risk benefits, as a commissioner, I'm gonna do everything I can to make it happen in a fiscally responsible manner. As I said earlier, we had about 50 public responses from owners who identified themselves, gave their positions. We have 2,400 properties. I'd really like to hear from more of our owners, not through HBPOA as a generic "I am representing." I need to hear from individuals, give their name, give their address. And really, at this point, the things I'd like to just hear very simply, do you support the purchase no matter what? Do you support the purchase as long as it'll pay for itself? Or do you support the purchase if you see a fiscally responsible plan and it's gonna take X number of dollars a year for a few years to make it work? Or do you not support the purchase? It's simple, just four categories. In closing, I've heard a lot of criticism from people that the board's been debating without telling anybody anything. And please remember, we've been discussing a potential purchase in executive session. We're not gonna say anything that could negatively impact the town's ability to negotiate. Now that we're moving into a new phase, there's still gonna be confidential matters we can't discuss. So please respect the fact that we're operating under government rules for executive sessions, under contract, under law. We'll tell you what we can when it's appropriate. We'll give information. So just trust us that we're not hiding things, but we have laws and regulations and rules of procedure and policies to follow. Thanks for your attention. Thanks for coming today. I hope to see y'all in August.
All right, it's our motion we adjourn.
My...
All in favor, say aye.